Recording in progress.
The time is six thirty. This is a special closed session for the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. Next, we have ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, we will now move to public comment for the closed session items. Seeing no members of the public, we will now move to the closed session, and the time is six thirty-one.
Recording stopped.
The time is six thirty-six, and we are reporting out from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Mora. On a motion by Councilmember Welch, which was seconded by Councilmember Solomon, the council approved a settlement in the amount of two hundred and thirty dollars and seven cents for property damage sustained to claim it, Marcia Morris's vehicle by a vote of five to zero. And this is in reference to Agenda Item five point one point three. Thank you.
Thank you. The time is six thirty-seven. This meeting is adjourned. The next meeting will be at six forty-five.
Recording stopped.
The time is six forty-five. This is a special study session for the City Council of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. Next, we have approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
I approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next are ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, we will now move to public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing no members of the public, we will now move to the study session, Item six point one. This is the advisory body composition and appointment process.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight, I'm Navarre Oak, Senior Planner, and I'll start off our presentation for the item, and then I'll hand it off to Valerie Bernardo, and then April Fran will come in at the end here. So we'll be tag teaming this evening. All right. Okay, so just a quick overview, because we're going over a lot of material this evening. So we're going to talk about why we're here, why we're discussing this, the advisory body composition recommendations, then the general advisory body recommendations. The first one is seat specific, the second one more involved. Then recruitment and outreach recommendations, and then the last part will be about the changes in the appointment process. Next slide. So what are we doing here? Why, what kicked this all off? Well, you may remember back in December of 2022, we adopted our housing element. And part of that was Program EE that talked about how to evaluate our committees and make sure they represent our community, and then also to look specifically at the Housing Committee and make sure it included a specific list of diverse voices. So then, last year in April of 2024, the Budget and Governance Committee directed staff to review the composition of the Community Grants Subcommittee specifically to enhance community representation there. And that moved on in June of 2024 to the same committee directing staff to consider adding demographic questions to Advisory Committee and Commission application. All of those things are consistent with each other. So then, what have we done so far? Directly after that, in September of 2024, there was a survey of existing advisory bodies for that demographic information, all voluntary, of course. And then that information was shared with committees and commissions at the beginning of this year in 2025. And we also requested feedback on advisory body composition and community outreach processes as part of that. And then, in spring, we added voluntary demographic questions to the advisory body application, and those revised application questions went out in May 2025, shared results with the Budget Advisory Committee. So just a quick snapshot here, there's more detailed survey results in the staff report. But if you look at the age demographics at the top, you'll see there's nothing less than twenty years old. And that's because we do not have any advisory committee members that are less than twenty years old. And a consistent theme in feedback throughout this was that really wanting to diversify the age groups and making sure that our youth have opportunities to participate in our city processes. That was something that multiple committees discussed, and you'll see that reflected in recommendations moving forward this evening. Next slide. So looking at those seats, we're going to look again, just breaking it down, what advisory body recommended, what Budget and Governance recommended, and then we're staff compiling those recommendations before you this evening. So what did the advisory bodies recommend? For Budget and Governance, they recommended removing one business seat and replacing it with a youth seat. The Housing Advisory Committee recommended making all the changes recommended in Program EE in the housing element. So for there be a designated seat for renters, homeowners, and for BMR recipients. And the Public Art Committee, they suggested having one seat or more designated to a large art-involved institution and allowing multiple people to share that designated seat. Next slide. So when Budget and Governance Committee reviewed these recommendations, they also suggested the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee have one or two seats for Emory High School students, so another youth seat. They agreed with the Housing Advisory Committee recommendations, and also suggested that VPAC look at designating seats for drivers, pedestrians, or bicyclists, various commute modes, and that also that the Public Art Advisory Committee designate one seat for ceramicists, which was related to the recommendation of a large art institution or representation of specific art groups. Next slide. So looking at those, all those recommendations, staff has synthesized that down and is suggesting exactly what the Budget Advisory Committee said for removing one business seat and replacing it with a seat for youth and student, for Park and Rec, designating one youth seat, the Housing Advisory, recommendations for renter, homeowner, and BMR, and then for the Public Art Advisory Committee, designating one seat for youth and one seat for a large art institution with over fifty affiliated artists. The idea being that that would encompass the various suggestions made at the other two committees. For youth or student, we're defining that as a person enrolled at Emory High School or an Emeryville resident enrolled in a college or university. Next slide. And I'm going to hand it off to Valerie.
A little shorter. Okay, so the others kind of recommendations that we received, not related specifically to the seats, I'm going to go over, those came from our advisory body committees, as well as the Budget and Governance Committee, and then we've synthesized that into what staff believes should be recommendations for City Council. Next slide. So there was a general sense that there was a lack of participation and representation from the disability community. There wasn't a specific recommendation related to there being a specific seat, which is why we have it here under their general comments. One comment was also made that in-person meetings is making it a little bit more difficult potentially for people who have disabilities, which may be why they're not participating. That was just a comment that was made. Additionally, as Navarre mentioned, there was a recommendation to increase our youth participation. There also was a recommendation to provide childcare or light snacks and refreshments during our meetings as budget would allow that ability to be there for. Additionally, there were a lot of comments about the attendance requirements were too strict. There also was a recommendation from the Public Art Committee to not prohibit the purchase of public art committee or public art committee spouses artworks. That currently is not within the advisory body regulations. That is an internal policy within that committee, and that has to do with conflict of interest, why that policy exists. But that committee did feel that that requirement should be removed. And then additionally, they felt that there should be more incentives or benefits to compensate public art committee members if we are not going to allow the ability for the city to purchase their artwork, because that is their business, and if they're serving on the committee and we're not allowed to purchase their art, that might be prohibiting people from wanting to participate on the committee. Next slide. So when we brought these recommendations back to the Budget and Governance, the comment that they had is they agreed, we do need to add seats for Emory High students to participate on some of the committees. They had also talked about removing the prohibition of the city purchasing the public art committee members or their spouse members artwork. And there also was a recommendation to automatically drop the August and December meetings, as applicable, to make it potentially less easier for committees to know that these two meetings won't exist within the twelve-month period. So dropping us down from a maximum of twelve meetings to ten. Next slide. Staff looked at those recommendations, we talked with the city clerk, as well as the city attorney's office, and what we felt that we wanted to recommend was there should be an allowance for seats that are held by a business organization to designate an alternative representative from that organization to participate on the advisory body when that primary member is unable to attend. Again, this would only be for business organizations that would have that ability. The other one, we recommend as an incentive, that maybe we recommend sending art calls that come out from other local jurisdictions to our public art committee members. So we're making them aware of other financial opportunities to receive a financial benefit. And then we are actually recommending to cancel the advisory body meetings between December fifteenth and January fifteenth, as applicable. Part of the reason we were not recommending the month of December is because depending upon when that committee meets, it may not be necessary to necessarily cancel the meeting. A good example I'll give for the Housing Committee is we traditionally meet in December. We don't, however, meet in January because our meeting is the first week, the first Wednesday of the month. So being so close to, let's say, the New Year's holiday is much more important for us probably to skip the January meeting than it would be to skip that first week in December. So depending upon what's applicable, skipping that window should take care of the holidays instead of just saying the entire month of December. For August, the reason we were not recommending that is for the same reason. It's not necessary always to cancel a meeting in August. I know City Council does take that month off. But for some committee meetings, again, I'll use Housing Committee as an example, we tend to cancel July because it's the week of July fourth. And we tend to meet in August because there's not a reason not to. So we just felt that every committee should leave it up to them as to whether or not they want to cancel August or July, but that should be a committee decision. But we do recommend that December fifteenth to January fifteenth being the recommended cancellation period automatically. Next slide. We did ask all of the committees- We did ask all of the committees to also look at our recruitment and outreach process. So how are we bringing people into our committees? How are we advertising the availability of participating as a public servant on a committee to our public? So we did get some comments from our advisory committee, and then staff also has some recommendations that we would like to move forward with. Next slide, please. I will say the recommendations are identical, so I'm going to go through them once. I won't repeat them on the next slide. But it was recommended that we ask our existing and former committee members to volunteer when we do events, community events, to ask them to volunteer to hold the actual table, talking about how to participate in the community process, and asking them to volunteer and sit there so that when people come up, they can answer questions of what is it like to sit on a committee? What is the requirements? But giving that ability to receive real feedback from an actual community member, we think is an important thing to move forward with. We also recommend adding flyers to all of the community bulletin boards that currently exist within the city about any of our open recruitment processes, and we also recommend adding community bulletin board to our city parks. That actually is within the CIP as a proposed project, so that's something that will happen, but we definitely think it's important to put our notices where the people are, and parks are where a lot of our residents like to frequent. We also are recommending establishing a recruitment day or a civics day, where City Hall would basically be open to the public for residents to come in, learn about all of the different department and the work that we do, and also learn about the various advisory committees. We are also looking to request our City Council members to assist us in promoting any recruitment opportunities. We want it to be a clear understanding that when people are looking to apply to be on our committees, that we do validate their lived experience. We're not necessarily looking for somebody to have 30 years of experience doing this in the past, because everybody's lived experience is important. So we want to make sure that that is clear to the public, that their lived experience is just as important as maybe having a degree or working in that field for umpteen years. We also want to utilize our Emeryville Commerce Connection to encourage businesses to participate. And currently, we are doing a BIPOC Small Business Needs Assessment, and we're hoping to look at some of the information that's coming out of there to talk about how we are identifying our BIPOC and small business communities and identify that as an additional communication channel. Lastly, I did skip one. We also want to figure out ways of creating mentorship opportunities. We have a lot of community members that are very committed to Emeryville and have served on a variety of committees for years. We think it's a great opportunity to figure out ways to have them mentor some of our newer members in the process, so that people don't feel the fatigue, they understand the importance, but we think that hearing from some of our existing or some of our previous members could also be an important tool to help recruit more people to participate. Next slide. So, as I mentioned, all those recommendations that kind of came from the advisory committee, we are recommending moving those forward as well. Next slide, please. And so that's the end of my part of the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to April.
Thanks, Valerie. Mayor and Council, I'm going to go through the advisory body appointment process and the changes that staff is recommending. At the same time, while Valerie and Navarre were working on the advisory body composition component, staff are looking at ways that we could improve the recruitment and appointment process. The recruitment and appointment process is a large workload for staff right now. We're recommending changes that'll increase efficiency, reduce the time spent on appointments at City Council meetings, and make the process less cumbersome for applicants, which is something that we've actually heard from applicants. The current process works like there is an annual recruitment for terms that expire on June 30th. So we open that recruitment in April of the year that the terms are expiring. We also have unscheduled vacancies that occur when members move, resign for health reasons, when we don't have any applicants during an open recruitment, and other reasons. The current recruitment takes about 70 days. We open the recruitment for 45 days, we get the applications, we redock them, we put them in the council packets, and then we have the council meeting. And we're open, on average, three times a year, so that's about 210 days that we have basically an ongoing recruitment going, but it's done in three different sections. For the appointment process changes, we are recommending that advisory body appointments are made at the council committee level for all advisory bodies except the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would stay at the City Council level in exactly the same way you do it until the council decides to change that. We're recommending that we sunset the Budget Advisory Committee and make it an ad hoc committee during the budget preparation cycle. We are also recommending that we keep an annual recruitment for expiring terms. That's the one that the terms expire on June 30th, but we also open a year-round advisory body application process to fill unscheduled vacancies. All of these changes would take effect in spring of 2026, in time for the annual recruitment. So here are the proposed changes of where we're recommending the appointing bodies be for these advisory bodies. BPAC, going to the Transportation and Sustainability Committee. Budget Advisory, again, the recommendation is to sunset it and change it to an ad hoc committee during budget season. Commission on Aging to Community Services. EDAC to Budget and Governance. Housing Committee to Budget and Governance. Parks and Recreation to Community Services. And Public Art to Budget and Governance. Planning Commission and any others would, again, there's no changes recommended for those. So the proposed application and appointment process, as we talked about for the annual appointments, that really isn't changing very much, but we are suggesting that we reduce the recruitment to 30 days, down from 45. We would forward the applications to the committee secretaries on the council committees for inclusion in the agenda packet in May, early June, and then the council committee makes the recommendations for appointments, and that goes in a consent item to the full City Council at the second meeting in June. So that would be the annual appointments for the terms that expire on June 30th. For unscheduled vacancies, each time someone resigns, or for whatever reason, we would open and advertise the vacancy for 15 days. We'd also forward all applications to committee secretaries for inclusion in the next agenda packet. I remember, at this point, we're going to be receiving these year-round, so it's not just these 15 days that people have to apply. It's any application that we've received in the last year, we're going to keep on file, and that's going to get forwarded also to the committee secretaries for inclusion in the next agenda packet. And then the council committee recommendation would be made, and it would be forwarded to council as a consent item on the next available agenda. So summary of staff recommendations, and this includes the portion that Navarre and Valerie did. So for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, staff's recommending that we use this committee to pilot a program to designate one existing seat for a youth student attending Emory High School or an Emeryville resident enrolled in college or university. And this, all of the designated positions that we're creating would all be slash community members. In case we don't get applicants specific to those positions, we would still be able to fill them with other applications that we'd received if desired. For Housing Committee, we're recommending that designate three of the existing community member seats, one to represent a renter, one for a homeowner, and one for a BMR recipient. For the PAC, we're recommending that if the pilot program on the Parks and Recreation Committee is successful, we designate one seat for a youth student, and we designate one seat for a large art institution. The fourth staff recommendation is except for the Planning Commission to cancel all advisory body meetings, December 15th to January 15th. And we are providing a budget for the community public meetings to provide snacks for the committee members, and that is budgeted in the City Clerk budget. And then the sixth recommendation is to open that continuous advisory body recruitment and make annual and scheduled appointments at the council committee level, and then sunset the Budget Advisory Committee in 2026 and change it to an ad hoc committee during budget season. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, April, and thank you, Valerie and Navarre. Members, do we have any questions on any part of the presentation? Member Solomon?
Thank you all for the presentation. Just a couple of clarifications. On the Budget Advisory Committee sunsetting, so, I guess, can you explain a little bit more how that would work? Would that be... Folks would apply during the annual committee vacancy period with the same, everyone, same as everyone else, just that the committee would only meet a handful of times a year? And then, I guess, I want to make sure that we're not dissolving it multiple times a year and then having to refill the positions?
I think how we're envisioning it working is that it won't dissolve until the terms expire in June of 2026. So working with the Finance Department, we would figure out when we would need to create that ad hoc committee, and ad hoc committees are created at the City Council level. So we would bring something to council to say, this is when we want to create the Budget Advisory Committee. And council has a couple different ways that they could do that. We could do it through an application process. We could reach out to former Budget Advisory Committee members. I don't know that the actual details have exactly been worked out, but that would kind of be up to council's discretion how they would like to reform that ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Can I ask one additional question?
Yes, go ahead.
And so just confirming that this, these recommendations don't apply to the non-advisory committees that we typically also fill at the same time, so I'm thinking of the ETMA, the ACTC's Paratransit Committee, Mosquito Abatement District, all of those?
That's correct. It's just the City Council ones, yes.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions? Member Welch?
As far as, there's been recommendations for the youth seats, so Emory High students or students that are currently enrolled in a college or university in the area, could there be adjustments around their attendance requirement? Because, of course, we know semester to semester, your schedule could change if you are either playing a sport that's not in the spring, it's in the fall, or vice versa, or how could that potentially work with kind of the more various changes in student schedules?
Well, I think this is a big reason why we want to pilot it on one committee, because we want to get it right. We want to figure out what works for someone in that age demographic. And again, I don't know that we've figured out all the details about it, but I've brought up questions of, you know, what if it's, what if it's a 16-year-old meeting at night? Is that feasible? Is that... So I think that there's definitely things, definitely questions that we need to answer around this and figure out a very strategic outreach plan also. We don't currently have any age restrictions on our applicants. Someone at 16 could apply for any of our advisory bodies right now. They just don't. So we need to figure out how we do that outreach and how we can tailor that position to encourage someone in that age demographic to sit on that committee. And all of our neighboring cities have youth advisory committees, and they have, most of them have youth sitting on their committees, so it's not something that, it's not something brand new. It's brand new to us, but it's definitely something that I plan to reach out to, you know, the City of Albany, City of Berkeley, and find out how they've made their youth designations successful on their advisory bodies.
Yeah, go ahead.
As far as allowing for the businesses and organizations to have essentially an alternate member, is, could you all, if, and also Valerie and Navarre, if you could chime in as well, is there a specific reason why, I noticed you didn't say specifically why you only wanted that to apply to an organization? I'm assuming because obviously, an organization is going to have multiple people that you could pull from, from a department that could sit there, but as far as maybe having alternates available for people who are sitting there, was that discussed at all?
So it wasn't discussed in that way. I think the best example that I come up with would be like the Economic Development Advisory Committee, which has a lot of business organizations that sit on that seat, and not always, but sometimes there's turnover in a company, and then there's a vacancy. And now we've got to figure out the recruitment process. Now, the Clerk's Office is recommending a way to address that. When this came up, that was not on the table, and the thought process was, if you have the manager of a shopping center, or the manager of a hotel that has been assigned to the committee, and they're out sick, they've been fired, and there's a new general manager, is there any reason why somebody else from that same corporation shouldn't be able to come in and attend that meeting? Right now, the process is designated to an individual person and not a company. We think that this could be a way to help address not having quorums, having vacancies, if those type of organizations had the ability of maybe sending somebody else in their place. That recommendation is a recommendation we have. It is not necessarily recommended to you guys to take up tonight. We think we need to think through it a little bit more, but it was a recommendation that had come from one of the committees. We think it's something that should be explored. We're not ready to do all the exploration today. So it is in the presentation as a recommendation, but it's not one of the final recommendations we're asking for the council to take action on tonight.
That was all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Any other questions? Member Pryforce?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm trying to understand the problem that the City Clerk's recommendations is trying to solve in contrast to what was recommended by, you know, city staff and others when it comes to diversity and demographic issues. Is it, because it sounded like it was a workload issue that would, that, what, how would this structure, what problem would it specifically solve? Because I, my instincts are telling me that this would actually exacerbate the issues that were pointed out in terms of diversity and demographics. Yeah, so could you help me understand why we're having committees appoint and other members of committees and so on?
The City Clerk's Office and the staff recommendations from this end for the committee appointment process are not, have nothing to do with diversity and inclusion. Those were not our goals. Our goals, when we started this, were to look at how to make the appointment process more transparent, more clear to applicants, and an easier, yes, workload for both staff and the City Council, not taking up so much time at City Council meetings. Our thought is at the committee level is things are actually, more of a, more of a deep dive is done at that level. There'd be more time to look at the applicants, to, you know, screen the applicants as the committee members see fit. But we were not, the other component of this, of this presentation was addressing the diversity and equity piece, but that was not part of the, why we're recommending changes to the appointment process.
Any further questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. My question involves, is this a separate item from what was proposed as a future agenda item by this council? I believe it was last year regarding the diversity and inclusion in the advisory bodies versus this, this item is, is this an item that is completely separate from that item? Because I don't see, I see maybe a surface acknowledgement of diversity and inclusion in here, much like what was discussed at the Budget and Governance Committee, which you presented, I think in the summer. But this is not the same presentation. It is a completely different item from what I understand. Is that correct? But this is not the same presentation. It is a completely different item from what I understand. Is that correct?
So, the Budget and Governance Committee saw earlier this year was specifically about Program EE and community composition, right? We talked about community composition and looking at that process. Then there's the part from the City Clerk's Office, which is looking specifically at the actual application process and how that works. Those things were combined for this because they're both about committees and how they function and work. So, we put them all together as one item for you to consider together. But no, you did not look at the part about the process at Budget and Governance, because that was specifically about community composition in and of itself. So, they are two topics combined into one for this presentation. I don't know if April or Valerie would like to add anything for more clarification to that. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
A little bit. It does answer some part of the question. And I'm just wondering how this came about, how these processes came about. I don't remember it being on the future agenda items. So, this came about at some other point? Was it raised at a committee? How did it come about?
So, for the community composition part, that was discussed at the beginning of this presentation, where we talked about how the adoption of the housing element, that it recommended looking at committee composition, and then the directives by the City Council later on in 2024 to look at a subcommittee, forget the subcommittee composition. Anyway, the City Council directed to look at subcommittee composition specifically. That was, those two things were linked, right? That was consistent with the housing element directives. So, then we brought that information to all of the committees at the beginning of this year. And then that came to Budget and Governance. So, when we were going through the summaries, we were going through the summaries of what all of those committees said. I know, it's a lot. And then what, then what Budget and Governance said, and then staff trying to synthesize that information specifically for committee composition. And then bringing you, correct me if I'm wrong, April, a new thing about the actual application process. So, you can look holistically at the whole situation for committee, committees in general, and see how to address those holistically. That's why they work combined.
I know. Thank you so much for that explanation, because that's exactly what I was trying to understand. This was not an, you explained it, that it was something that was new, that likely, in my understanding, has come about as a result of those, the housing element, exploring the composition of the committees and discussing diversity and inclusion at the Budget and Governance. So, as a natural follow-up to that, this item arose because you would have to discuss process with the, the Clerk's Office in order to manage how you're going to resolve the process to include the composition as well as the diversity and inclusion part.
Right. So, because the composition component includes recommendations to changing the seat, that requires a change to the city charter to that, not to the charter, pardon me, to the ordinances. Wow, I don't know where that came from. Pardon me. So, to the city ordinances, which specify the designation of seats and committees. So, while you're looking at that, looking at the process of appointment makes sense as well, as that has been a long process, and we're trying to see how we can expedite that a little bit to make sure that everything that April said before, and to emphasize also that we have had problems with vacancies, and it's taking a long time to fill those vacancies. We want to be able to make sure that the city's able to do its business and everybody gets to participate. If we don't have quorum, we're not able to do that. So, helping make sure that these seats are filled is really critical to the function of the city.
Thank you for that explanation. So, I, again, want to understand that part that you have explained. It's this processes element, for lack of a better term, came about as a result of exploring those two, diversity and inclusion and the composition of the committees. With the processes part, I have a follow-up question.
I will step away.
Thank you. I, my question is relating to the fact that the processes, even though it has brought, been brought up as a new part of the discussion and a logical part of the discussion from, you know, what it seems, it's just not very clear to me that the, you, I think it has been admitted here that the processes need to be further refined or defined. So, what exactly is this council approving in this study session? Is this just informational, or are we just taking these recommendations too hard? And you will come back with solidifying the processes that we can all, again, vote on, debate on, or understand better?
Correct. So, this is a study session. So, we're just getting direction from council tonight. These are staff recommendations. What the next steps are, is we need to make changes to resolutions. We need to make changes to at least one ordinance, because the, the Public Art Committee is, is, is by ordinance. And then it would be the council rules of procedure and the advisory body rules of procedure. So, there are several opportunities when staff brings back information. We, what we're trying to gauge tonight is, do these general recommendations resonate with, with the City Council? And can we move forward with bringing those resolutions, ordinances, and rules of procedure to the council to, to institute these changes for, for April of, of next year?
Thank you. I, I have a follow-up on that. So, so today's thing is about the staff recommendations as well as getting input from council as to where, how or what we could, because I, there are several things that are loose here, and I think some input would be warranted from, from everyone, community as well as council, staff, and everyone. Is that a, is that a valid point?
You'd like to make additional recommendations? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, maybe. I would like to make additional recommendations or refine the recommendations that are already made or understand them a little bit better.
Yes, staff's here to hear that.
I appreciate that, so.
Vice Mayor, can I ask, do you have, so on the six recommendations, and I can see numbers four, five, and six up on the screen, and those are, and here's one, two, and three. Are there specific questions that you have about any one of these that could, we could ask staff to help clarify at this point?
I don't have clarification requests for this particular slide or Slide 24. I think I do have clarifications regarding Slide 20 and 21.
Okay, let's pull those up. So, this is the one that designates the, the Advisory Committee's subject matter as being delegated to the, the appointments would take place at the specific council committees.
Correct.
Please proceed with your questions.
Thank you, Mayor. So, can, can we go to the next slide, 21, just for clarifications? So, the BPAC would go ahead and be the proposing body for the Transportation and Sustainability Committee. That means the, the members sitting on BPAC would, would be, are they, is, is this council members as well as commission members, as well as, or this is just the BPAC and there are no council members sitting? I'm just trying to understand, because the advisory body is not necessarily, I think, I'm sorry, it's the other way around, right? Yeah, now I understand that. Okay. Because, okay, so, so now, okay. No, thank you. I was just going in about it. Now I understand. So, the Transportation and Sustainability Committee would go ahead and make the appointments on the, for the BPAC, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then going forward, that means there, there are going to be two council members who are going to be sitting on that committee. So, and I know that three cannot sit on a committee, right? So, this is where the, the democratic part comes to me. So, what if there is a challenge, or I think that, this is a situation we had run into previously. And I think that's the reason why this does not seem to be a very democratic process. Because it, it gives it to just two council members to make that appointment for all of the nine BPAC members. It is efficient, yes, I guarantee that, but I think it, it could be more efficient. I, I don't know. Again, I take back that I guarantee that, but I, I'll finish my thoughts. So, and the same thing with the Community Services Committee would do the Commission on Aging, two members of the council. Maybe what if they don't agree with all seven, and the seven applicants, applications come in? So, I'm trying to understand the process. If I could get a sense that this is efficient and democratic, then I think it would be something that I, I could endorse.
Member Welch.
So, Madam Vice Mayor, five, May. So, we're on the Budget and Governance Committee. Say we have a conflict. We don't agree, but we, the recommendation would say Vice Mayor Carr said they select this person. Councilmember Welch said they select this person. It's still going before the council. Nothing is being made on the committee, the recommendations. But if they're, if we're both recommending different people, that's also being presented to the council. Also, these are still public meetings. The committee meetings are still public meetings, so people can still come and make public comment. Our fellow council members can come as members of the public and observe the meetings and also make public comment as members of the public, not representing themselves as council members. So, this is still a part of the democratic process, because our committee meetings are still a part of our democratic process. They're still a part of public meetings. Everything is still, is just the deeper dive and giving people the opportunity to come and speak at the committee meetings, and us being maybe able to talk about it for two hours. We can take a whole, we can make a special meeting and talk about all five, six, how many ever applicants we want to. So, I, I think what staff really wants to stress, and what's being stressed in these recommendations, is that, say, we've got one great candidate, because that happens a lot too, right? We'll have one candidate for one, one opening. Okay, we think they're great. Let's recommend them. And hey, we have one candidate for this one open seat. This sounds great. Colleagues, we think this person is great. Our colleagues said, hey, great, we trust you all. Let's throw it on consent and let's keep moving forward. So, I don't want you to think that it's taking away, because this is still a part of our public process. It's not, we are not making any decisions. We are making a recommendation. We can get here, and our three colleagues can, we can say, we love this person, and they can say, you all don't know what you're talking about. We want this person. And then it's three to two, and then that's, that's what it is. But this is still a part of the public process. We're not taking away anyone's voice. We're not taking away anything from the public process at all.
Just to clarify here, this, this is for questions clarifying things, and I, I did just want to make one point of clarification, which is that the, these are recommendations by the appointing body that then come before the full council. Is that right?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Welch. I, so that, that defeats that, that point, the efficiency part. So, now, I mean, if this is supposed to be more efficient, so, because what I, my, my understanding now has changed, or now it seems to me that there is going to be more time spent than one council meeting on discussing these applicants. So, now that defeats the whole purpose of this being an efficient process. So, that, that puts into question the fact that why are we discussing this twice when we could discuss it once in front of the council body? And all five of us, or the five council members before or after us, could make those decisions as has already been made? What exactly would serve the purpose of these bodies, proposed appointing bodies, to have this discussion once, only to have this discussion again before the council? So, I, I think it actually defeats efficiency rather than promotes of operational efficiency.
So, I just have one more point of clarification on just how the process would work. So, the same way that we delegate subject matter to Budget and Governance, Transportation and Sustainability, and then those committees discuss those items, then they, there might be a decision on something regarding those items that then comes back to the full council, but usually it's part of the consent calendar. So, it represents to the rest of the council some sort of consensus between the two council members that they had developed, that they had delegated this subject matter to. So, there's not necessarily going to be a full-fledged discussion on any one recommendation coming from these committees, but rather, the rest of the council can trust that the, the council members that they voted, that they selected to serve on those committees are exercising their expertise and best judgment, making recommendations. But it is not binding, to your point, there could be a secondary discussion that, that follows. But I just wanted to clarify the process as I, as I see it working in the proposed changes. Okay, any other questions? Member Pryforce.
I've been raising my hand for a while. From a procedural level, can we get to discussion? Because I feel like we're discussing, and right now we're doing clarification, and I feel like there may be some clarification in the discussion. But there's a lot to be said about this, and, and so can we get to the discussion part?
Agreed. We do have public comment next. So, if there's no further quest, clarifying questions from council, I'd like to open the public comment. Seeing none, please come to the. Welcome, Fran. Sorry, seeing no other comments from council. Welcome, Fran.
So, all right. Now, I have served on the Budget Advisory Committee for a significant number of years, and before me, Bill Reuter served. And I have to say, I've, I have very specific and, and negative reactions to this proposal. And I'm going to spare mincemeat words in what I'm going to tell you from my experience. And this is to keep our city as, as strong and as creditworthy with the reputation that we have built, and I hope to sustain. And I want you to really take those words to heart, okay? Turning the Budget Advisory Committee into an ad hoc committee is a bad idea, straight out. I feel it weakens the city and somehow detracts from our credit worthiness and city competencies. There has been significant turnover in the Finance Department. We have a new Finance Director. And I feel that there is legacy knowledge in the committee that should be retained at least until, I would say, four years from now. Then you could make another decision. But the Finance Department is in flux, and I feel you need the competency and study capabilities of the committee. And that's my serious recommendation. The issues that we look at are not just budgets. So, that speaks to the issue of the budget cycle. We look at pension fight, pension funding. We look at contracts for the fire department, for example. We look at overtime expenses. We look at bond issues, fund trans, inter, interdepartmental fund transfers. We look at planning for upcoming expenses, and we look at also possible ballot measures, what possible funding for things that we need. I'm concerned that not having.
Thank you, Fran.
I want to finish this one sentence. I'm concerned that ad hoc members that change all the time and only serve for short periods of time will defeat the whole purpose of the city's budget planning process. That's it.
Thank you, Fran. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. And I did want to start out with just one more question, clarifying question. And this does pertain to the comment we just heard about the Budget Advisory Committee and their work. And I'm wondering, as an alternative to sunsetting the committee, was there any consideration to including it in the, kind of this delegation process? And the most appropriate delegating committee does sound like it could be Budget and Governance. So, then it does also alleviate some of the burdensome process of maintaining appointments. And, and I'm curious if staff has any thoughts on that.
The Budget Advisory Committee receives the exact same reports that Budget and Governance does. It becomes a dual workload for staff. We looked at ways to try to combine the committees and couldn't come up with any. Combining a council committee with a public advisory committee is not recommended. The advisory members of the community would outnumber the, the City Council members that sit on there. Our Finance Director is actually the one who came up with the suggestion to make it an ad hoc committee. But, you know, council could certainly also have this, these appointments made at the, at the council committee level if that's what they choose to do and not sunset the, the Budget Advisory Committee.
Thank you, April. So, now we have council discussion. Member Solomon.
Just a, a quick follow-on clarification question on the Budget Advisory Committee.
Just a quick follow-on clarification question on the Budget Advisory Committee. Does staff have a, I know it's very early in the process, but does staff have a sense of how often that ad hoc committee would meet? And would the timing be different? Would the, would the number of meetings and the frequency of those meetings be different than, I guess, what is currently proposed? What is, what is, what currently exists?
I would imagine, again, we're not recommending sunsetting it until June of 2026, so we have time to figure those things out. But my guess is that the frequency of the meetings and the number of meetings would be much more compressed into, I don't know if that's a six-month timeframe and nine, I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I don't know exactly what that looks like.
Mayor, our Finance Director is present in the chamber, so she could answer specifically.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Sharon Fredrickson, Finance Director. Again, conceptually, our thought is that since we do have a biannual budget, is really trying to think about options to really work on a compressed schedule. So as the council is quite aware, our spring sessions are quite intense on that two-year budget cycle. So the conceptual thought is to try to think about ways to encourage participation where we can get real solid, consistent input during the two-year budget cycle with the acknowledgement that there will be issues that come up through the course of the year that we would call meetings on, as our Budget and Advisory Committee member mentioned. There are things that do occur outside the biennial budget process that we would want the input of the Budget Advisory Committee. And so, again, as special topics related to the budget and fiscal issues come up, we would still call that body. But again, our thought was ways to really articulate that there would be an intense workload. I know right now the Budget Advisor Committee meets a lot in the fall, they're a little dark during the rest of the year. So part of that deliberation would probably be looking at changing maybe the frequency of the Budget Advisory Committee as well. So again, these are just our conceptual thoughts right now. We look forward to input at the study session from the council. And again, I can also do some follow-up with our committee members on what they think might be successful ways to contribute to the budget.
Thank you, Sharon. Just one more clarification related to that. So it, it sounds like the way it was envisioned, it was, it's more of a frequency adjustment to be somewhat meeting fewer times when the budget preparation activities are not in, in progress, and then that frequency starts to pick up. So it is less of a sunsetting. I think that term may have caused a reaction among some council members and committee members, but the, it's really more of a flexibility around frequency of meeting, and that's something that can be discussed and decided on later. Is that right?
That's accurate, Mayor, and I think our terminology may have been a little misconstrued, and I think we apologize for that.
No worries. Thank you. Members, any further discussion? Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Mayor. So when I got the materials for this study session, I looked at it and I saw it as two things that were being bundled together. And that, and so I want to address this whole process piece. I'll address that last, because that one I think is the most problematic. The, the one around specifically focused, as, as my colleague mentioned, because this was actually brought up to the council, we, we talked about it, this was, apparently it was discussed amongst the Budget Advisory, that, around composition, that we actually have to have better compositions when it comes to our committees and those sort of things, starting from housing and, but just abroad. But, you know, the theme of equity and, and having community voice. So, so I'll address, I'll address one and then I'll address the other. But honestly, they shouldn't even be bundled. So the diversity, the committee composition, I did have a recommendation around the use of nonprofit as not just it being business, that nonprofit institutions are private institutions. Sometimes they're doing better than many of our businesses in Emeryville. And, and I believe that there's just not enough language and inclusion of nonprofit organizations, especially nonprofit organizations in Emeryville. And when I became council member, I spoke to a lot of nonprofit organizations in Emeryville and, and who no longer could exist in Emeryville because they felt that Emeryville really did not have a lot of focus on nonprofits. And so, so having some sort of inclusive language when it comes to, to that is, I believe, really important. The art purchases, the art purchases one is a tricky one. And, you know, like I'm looking at Scott Donahue's art over here. And members of the art commu, of the art committee, you know, they came to me personally to speak about some of the bids that related to Scott Donahue's work and how he is overrepresented in some of the purchases. And, which of course is going to eventually lead to this whole process thing and why this whole consolidation of power is, is problematic. But, you know, I also understand that there not, may not be situations like Scott Donahue. And I, and I, and I think Scott Donahue is, is cool and all, but I do want to respond to the concerns that people have about, you know, if the city is buying art a lot from, you know, you know, one or two people, that there is, there is a concern. And so having some sort of lifting that regulation from members is of concern. However, I think there could be some middle ground, and this is what I recommend, which is maybe limiting the art purchases to one-offs, right? And so that the person, you know, they have their art and let's say the city does buy it or their, or their spouse, the city decides to buy the house, okay, boom, then, okay, that's it. You, you hit your quota, you hit your max, you can't, we can't buy more, more art from you. And I think that that would make it a bit more fair to other people who want their art purchased by the city, and so there isn't that outsized influence. So, so that's something that, that came to me as we were talking about this. And so one of the things that, and I'm glad that Fran mentioned this, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to do that, that a member of the public mentioned this, which is around how do we value those with long-term, especially institutional knowledge, but long-term knowledge as opposed to those who, you know, came into Emeryville and, and, you know, a month ago and then suddenly they're on a committee and that sort of thing. And so I think that in terms of representation, we should also be looking at, how do we, how do we start looking at folks who have certain lengths of residency? That, you know, whether it's, you know, if there's less than a year, one to three years, three to five, five, 10, 10, 15, like those kind of demographics, I, I believe should be something that we, we take a look at so that we can balance fresh perspectives with long-term community knowledge. So that we, so if mostly everyone on the committees have been here for 15-plus years, then we're like, okay, well, we have a problem, right? We might be stuck. But at the same time, if, you know, 90, 100% of committee members have only been around for a year, well, we got a problem, right? And so, so I think that having a balance of the two is something that we should look at in terms of missing metrics. You know, of course, the differently abled, I, I love that, that there's an acknowledgement that we need to work on that. And, and of course, that, that renters versus homeowners shouldn't just be limited to the housing committee. I think that, that we should be looking at our renter versus homeowner composition across all our, our committees, because those are very stark differences. One of the things that, that did come up in terms of the demographics is that 70% of our committee survey respondents identify as white compared to about 40% of Emeryville's population. And, yeah, you know, that, that necessarily wasn't said, but I'm, I'm saying that, that there is overrepresentation. And so it makes it clear that we need stronger outreach to Black, Latino populations, underrepresented populations. But I think the biggest underrepresented population is that if we have 30% that are considered Asian, and I'll go, go a little into that, and, and we have so few Asian representation on our committees, that is an issue. And so, so I think that, that we should definitely be looking a lot more as to balancing some, our, our Asian participation. And then also look, go into a deeper dive as to whether that Asian is, is Indian or Chinese or, you know, sort of what we call big Asians, as opposed to the smaller Asians, which is the Pacific Islanders, like those who tend to be underrepresented in several demographics, when it comes to housing, when it comes to education, when it comes to income, those sort, and so I think looking at that a little bit more, it would be good, but we definitely have some overrepresentation. And we're also slightly overrepresentation, it's not too big, but we do have some over, overrepresentation when it comes to income. And so, you know, I think that when we have 22% in terms of our committees are, are under 50K, and then we have another 22% that are between 50K and 100K, then that's, that's a good number compared to the other demographics. And so I think looking at what we can do to better engage our lower-income populations to become voices on our committees. So, that being said, now we'll get to the process. So, so I, you know, you know, like, just like I did with Scott Donahue and I called names, I'm, I'm gonna start calling names. So, okay, so John Botters has been here for, he had been in politics here for a while. And, you know, my, you know, I'm here because of the people who feel that they were underrepresented in terms of their voice. And then underrepresented, not just on the city council, but in terms of the committees. And, and I'm trying to do my best to, to make it more equitable along all these different lines. And I'm, and hopefully that is a sentiment that's shared with my, with my colleagues. But when, 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 when John Botters was on the Budget Advisory Committee, and then we're proposing that they are appointing, that this, that this committee, that would become an ad hoc committee, is, is, is appointing members to the housing committee, when people are being, when, when, when some of those folks have reached out to John Botters about lead poisoning, about, you know, some of the issues when it comes to housing, that those kind of decisions being left to two council members as a part of this committee as opposed to the entire, this entire body, that is an issue. And I believe that this process is, is a, it, it, it gives city council members more power, definitely. And so you can imagine that if us, that I as a city council member, if, 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 if there's a process in front of me wherein I'm getting more power and I'm saying no to that, then that says something. That says something about my character and that, but that says, says something about whether or not this is actually democratic. I believe that, that my council colleagues' instincts are right, and I believe that, that there will be public backlash over this process. One of the things that I saw was where's the competitive landscape? When, when we look at policies, we look at policies as, okay, well, Berkeley did this, you know, Oakland did this, San Francisco did this, and I don't see that in the staff report as relates to us doing something like this. It just doesn't seem that fleshed out. And, and I hope that my remarks provide some sort of caution for us to head towards this direction, because it doesn't solve the problem. And I think that that's the problem. Look, we had a, a, someone who came up for planning commission, who, who became a planning commissioner because no one else was there. They, it was, they were by themselves, right? And we've had it in the past where we had council members who also became council members or they were elected or re-elected because no one, no one else applied. And so I think that this process doesn't actually solve some of the problems that are in front of us, which is how do we get more people to become more involved? And I'm not, you know, I'm, you know, I, I, I appreciate the, the, some of the mentions about like how we are communicating and how we are recruiting. But we, we really do need a comprehensive communication strategy about this, about this process. And I think that changing the process in the name of efficiency or whatever doesn't, it doesn't, I don't see it solving some of the problems that I have addressed in the past, that others have addressed in the past, that some, that some of the folks in Emeryville have had an issue in terms of how City Hall is run. All it does, in, in terms of my perception, is it consolidates power so that the city council is, you know, divided into these committees, and then as these committees, they are appointing these, our advisors. And so those buddy-buddy networks are retained, many of the, the process becomes siloed, and, and I'm concerned that we're heading in a, in a direction that would, we would receive a lot of negative feedback from the public, and I don't see it solving the problem. How do we recruit more folks, get more participation and get it from a more body of folks when the biggest problem that people tell me, and I think some of my other colleagues, I didn't know that this was coming up. That's the biggest problem. I didn't know. And so if we can confirm that most of the city knew that these appointments were up and then just decided, well, I'm, I'm just not interested, I'm too busy, whatever, okay, cool, right? Then we, then we have a different problem. But I feel like that is the biggest problem, is that most people are saying, I didn't, I didn't know about, no, I did not see that tweet, Kalima. No, I did not see the website, you know, I don't go to the website. No, that website should be informing me, I shouldn't be checking the website every week to find out whether or not, you know, that's the problem. And I feel like this doesn't solve that problem.
Any other member comments or discussion? Member Welch.
Ask staff to re-clarify. There is no appointment going on at the committee level, correct?
That's correct. It's just recommendations to the full city council.
Okay, cool. I just feel like that has not been apparently very clearly identified. No one, no two council members on a committee are appointing anyone. Everybody, like anything else coming out of a committee, has to be approved by the entire council. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember.
So also, there's been concerns raised about outreach, and I just want to just address the staff report. Community outreach is mentioned approximately five times, community outreach and engagement, community outreach and committee composition, and there is, there's been a focus on in-person community outreach, correct? Because there has, we have received feedback about people aren't necessarily looking at the website, they're not necessarily on social media, especially our seniors or people who, they're just not engaged in that way, but they do attend things like the Harvest Festival. They are going to the. Festival, they are going to the Holiday Parade, they are going to the Healthy Homes Festival, and they're going up to the booths. They do want to learn about the city, but there has been stress, there has been, uh, focus and, um, a concentrated effort on in-person engagement, correct?
Yes, and we're hoping to do that more. Some of the recommendations in the, uh, in the presentation and in the staff report, uh, also enhance those, those outreach efforts. But we're posting more physical flyers and, um, engaging on that level in a way that we haven't, uh, in the past, too.
And then, so also noted in the staff report, it says adding signage, community bulletin boards to city parks, which is a part of, which is also added in the CIP. Obviously Civics Day would be in-person, so people are invited to city hall, a place where some people have never been, so they can meet other committee members in person, and speak to people, and get their own feedback and understanding, because people, again, as I think Valerie had noted, some people feel like their experience, they hear budget advisory, they think they have to be a CPA, and that's not true. They all experience as welcome. We do want people who have lived here for a month, or ten years, or twelve years, or forty years, because everyone is here and we're a community, and everyone has a point of view that's being valued. So there is a, a big focus on in-person engagement, correct? And it's all throughout this. I just want, because I don't want there to be any confusion about how this process or this revamping of how we engage people, this is not just how you engage people, also includes how diverse committees can be. We have to have diverse ways of engagement, so, and then that would be bringing in diversity, especially, there was mention of lack of individuals living with disabilities, being able to engage or being willing to engage. That also has been a red flag. Also, yes, white people are overrepresented. That isn't something that is specific to Emeryville, that actually is across the board. Older, wider, wealthier homeowners typically are overrepresented when it comes to civic engagement. That is just something that we know, something that happens across the country, but especially here in the Bay Area, where we're dealing with a big drain, many people of color, younger families are having to leave the area. So we do know that is an issue, and that has been properly identified by staff in the staff report, correct, Madam Clerk? And if any other staff members would like to tap in on this, I would appreciate that.
Yes, and those, uh, recommendations from the advisory bodies are enhancements to what we currently do, and there are some new ideas in there. And we'll be exploring ways to, um, you know, do, uh, do a better job with our outreach. Um, I know that we, I know that we can, and I think that some of the, uh, creative solutions that the, um, the community members suggested on that list, um, are, are some great ideas for us to, to do in the future.
And then I had one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Member Welch, then Member Pryforce.
Sharon, could you, do you mind? I'm sorry if I had missed it. With your discussion around the ad hoc committee, we would not be recruiting new people every time there was something going on. The recruitment process, as far as the, the roster would remain the same until there was, then the, the seat would be, uh, the term would end, correct? There would still be the same type of term limits? It would just, you were just referring to the meeting schedule, correct? So we're not pushing people out, or cycling people off, or every time if it's, you know, we're on a new subject matter, we're talking about a ballot measure, we're not recruiting people to talk about the ballot measure?
That's correct, Councilmember Welch. Again, the, uh, uh, thought behind it is about, I think, trying to get that expectation that definitely the primary focus is the budget. And so as part of a biannual budget cycle, there would be a level of, of intensity and frequency, um, during that first year. But then again, it would tap, it would maybe tamper off a little bit in terms of the frequency and duration, and really focus then more on other fiscal matters or, uh, special needs that arise, such as, say, a ballot measure, or if there was an issue, um, you know, related to, to fiscal, uh, and budget matters. So again, the, uh, appointment would stay the same. We wouldn't be recruiting, um, uh, four members on an ad hoc basis. It would be the consistent, um, advisory group, and go through the selection process that, uh, the council, uh, determines for all of the, uh, committee members. Um, again, it would just, uh, just be about the change of maybe of frequency of the cycle of meetings and the, the duration, in terms of how frequently, um, that committee would meet during our budget cycle. And again, really trying to make that alignment to the biannual budget process.
And to be clear as well, any, the budget advisory, like the other committees, can, they can call if I have special meetings, correct?
That is correct, Councilmember.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Member Pryforce, and then Member Solomon.
Yes, it's come to a point where, like, it's, it's so predictable. I know when I make comments, uh, who's going to respond, and how they're going to respond, and it's usually a reinforcement of staff recommendations. That's okay, because that is a history, uh, when it comes to, uh, my people, that that exists. But I already am prepared, uh, for that. I already know that the, um, uh, the appointment process is not happening at this council committee, uh, level. However, naming names, um, I, you know, there's an old Evil Eye, shout out to the Evil Eye article about, um, about, uh, Dr. Eugene Sui, uh, who, uh, who, who, who came before this council, uh, I believe it was for, uh, planning commission, um, and, uh, and it felt really disrespected. And it wasn't just him, it was, uh, two other people who felt really disrespected by this council. And the response was, this was a goody-goody network, that, um, and, and that is the concern. So, so even when it comes to recommendations that are making, that being made to the city council, the filtering process can still happen. So you're still appointing, you know, you're not, you're not appointing, but you're, but you're intimidating, you're, uh, you're making people uncomfortable, you can still filter what comes through, uh, to the, to the city council in order for, uh, us to be able to make those, uh, those kinds of appointments. And so, you know, anybody listening to this process and has, uh, uh, some sort of good idea of fascism and, and, and how fascism works, this, their instincts say this is not the way to go, especially since, as I mentioned, it, in terms of what problem does it solve? And it's still not clear that that is the problem that it solves. Now, like I said, I am in favor of some of, of some of the recommendations in terms of outreach. Yes, let's do that. But when it comes to, uh, do, how do we, you know, from a customer development standpoint, uh, how do we go to the people of Emeryville and say, how do you want to know or learn about what's happening, um, in, in terms of, uh, a city council business? Let's start with you. What do you, how, how do we learn from you? Tell us, tell us what's the best way for us to communicate to you, resonate with you as to, uh, what's happening in city council? And then they tell us, and then they tell us, and then they inform us, and then we get this data, and then we make decisions based on that. And I feel like this, this, the, the strategy, the, 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 the tradition, the culture here, um, tends to be a lot more top-down, rather than grassroots bottom-up. And that is what I am addressing. And, and unfortunately, this system does that. And so what, what are our remarks? That when we allow one committee to, uh, to, to control the recommendations to another, we create a hierarchy that undermines the principle of shared governance. Instead of broadening community participation, this structure risks reinforcing silos and cultivating buddy-buddy dynamics, where insiders select insiders. That dynamic discourages new voices, particularly residents who don't already have a foot in the door. And that's all I want. I want more foots, I want more foots in the door. I want more people, more diverse people, people who are underrepresented, to be able to participate, uh, in a government that they pay for, that your tax dollars pay for, and we're accountable to you. And I think it's time that we act like it.
Uh, Member Solomon.
Thank you. Just a clarification question, I guess, on the, on the budget advisory committee. And, uh, apologies if I, I didn't understand this before. So it sounds like the, the, uh, appointments would happen once every year, but then the ad hoc nature of it allows us to be more flexible in terms of, you know, we're not going to meet for three months, and then we're going to meet once a week for a few weeks as needed. But the, the, the committee members are exactly the same, and they just need to apply once every two years, or once every year, whenever their, um, their term is up. Is that, am I understanding the, the idea? And I understand that this is still, uh, to be determined, because this is just a study session.
Sharon, go ahead.
That is correct, Councilmember Solomon.
Well, just one clarifying question on that. I, I thought that the, the intent of having these, uh, kind of delegated committee appointments, uh, are able, we're able to kind of do thing, we're kind of able to be more nimble than the council with its seventy-day period. So i- is it not possible then to, uh, you could fill an appointment at, say, the budget advisory committee at any given meeting potentially of the, uh, Budget and Governance Committee? Am I understanding that incorrectly?
You'd have to have a vacancy.
Sorry, say, say there was a vacancy, and then there was an upcoming Budget and Governance meeting, where presumably the vacancy could be filled. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be necessarily dropping the frequency of the potential appointments. It seems like this is a way to be more nimble about keeping up the number of, uh, committee members, so that we don't have, uh, that we're not failing to meet quorum routinely.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Uh, any other comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So can we go back to that twenty, the last slide with the recommendations? I just want to clarify what mine are and what I agree with, so that, since this is the discussion session, it's clear. Since this is the study session, to ask for feedback and for input and comments that can be incorporated. So P-RAC being pub, uh, is it Parks, Recreation and Arts Committee? What is?
Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Okay. Use this committee to pilot a program to designate one existing, existing seat for a youth student attending Emory High, or an Emeryville resident enrolled in a college or university with annual recruitment opening. I think this is a great idea. I, I love it, and I think it should be implemented. Designate three, uh, one for, one is on the housing advisory committee, one as a renter, represent homeowners, and one is representing BMR. I think another great idea. Um, from my understanding, both these would have a slash community member or slash business rep to make sure that we fill those seats in case we don't get these people from that demographic written in here, correct?
That's correct.
So I think that's a fine idea. Public Arts Committee. If the pilot program on the, um, uh, Park and Recreation is successful, then do it on the Public Arts. I think that's, that's a fine idea as well. Um, going on to the next slide, twenty-four. Except for the planning commission, cancel all advisory committee commission December fifteenth. I think that's fine, if that's how they want to operate, uh, and that promotes efficiency and that, with the staff as well as the committees, that's completely fine. With the snacks, yes, please go ahead and provide them. I think these people are doing a public service, that's the least we can do for them. Uh, open a continuous advisory body recruitment and make annual and unscheduled appointments at council committee level as outlined in the table. Um, okay, so this, there are two parts to this, from what I see, is, and please correct me if that's not what, what this understanding should be. Um, this continuous advisory body recruitment, would it be for all committees?
Yes.
Okay. And make annual and unscheduled appointments at the council committee level as outlined in the table. So as the appointment come up, as these appointment come up with, for, for these advisory body, then the council go, goes ahead and makes it, makes the appointment based on the resumes they get, or the, uh, outreach, or whatever's coming. Is that correct?
Correct. For the continuous advisory body recruitment, that's year-round, so applications are coming in for unscheduled vacancies. And then the annual recruitment terms do expire on June thirtieth, so we do a larger and longer recruitment for, for that one, but include all the applications that we've received over the year.
Okay, I'm fine with that. And then the part two of it, and sunset the budget advisory committee in twenty-twenty-six, and change it to an ad hoc committee, committee during the budget season. I think the member of the public here made a good, good point that there has to be continuity to budget and advisory. So here, I think that this community input should be validated and, um, taken into account. With regards to all this discussion about how we are going to go ahead and do the outreach and all that, I think, um, that can be, that can be explored and be further, um, you know, it can be brought back or, uh, further refined. For, lack of better term, that, that needs to be, um, definitely something that has to be considered, if we are considering processes, changing to ordinances and all that. Um, for the recommendations, that I, I don't really think that if, if, if something isn't broke, there should not be a reason to fix it. I think what we have right now, as, uh, five members of a body considering the advisory, giving more input, reading the material that comes in, and there's a benefit of five opinions, it's better than two when we are, you know, considering this. Uh, I know even those are going to be recommendations, I think that actually makes duplicative work, because I hear the same thing at the, um, you know, budget advisory committee or transfer, and then it comes back to council, and it's the same thing that I've heard, and not that it, I, I know my colleagues haven't heard it, so it is necessary to put it on there. I just think that putting it on there once and having everyone consider it is more efficient and less work for everyone involved. So that would be my input there.
I just wanted to share some of my thoughts. I, I do really appreciate the staff putting together these recommendations around the committee representation, uh, and around the process. And I, I do think we should be responsive to the comment that it, it is onerous to be running these, uh, three-seventy-day, uh, recruitment processes, uh, and there's an opportunity to be, uh, more nimble and to actually take advantage of these committees that we've created to deal with specific subject matter, where we've trusted, uh, two of these council members, uh, to, uh, make decisions and weigh in on these topics. Um, I, I do, so I, I support Vice Mayor's, uh, comments about one through five, um, and I think the rest of the council also on item six, uh, does not want to see the budget advisory committee sunsetted. Uh, but of all the committees that seem to make sense to delegate to budget and governance to make recommendations on, uh, thoughtful, uh, members, uh, I, I do think that the Budget and Governance Committee would be, uh, well-positioned to make recommendations for the Budget Advisory Committee. Uh, and also, I think the frequency of it can be, uh, kind of revisited, uh, you know, based on, based on need. Um, so I, I'm prepared to make a motion to support the staff recommendations, with the exception of modifying item six, uh, to not sunset the, that budget advisory committee, but rather to delegate the, uh, the, the composition and meeting frequency to budget and governance. Uh, and I, I think a lot of the other delegations, uh, make sense, and it's, I, I think it's something that we should, we should take advantage of these committees that we've created. Uh, so I'll make that motion, but I do want to allow other, uh, comments, uh, before we, uh, call the roll. Uh, Member Pryforce, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I have my own recommendations. Um, uh, I just want to, uh, give kudos to, uh, Vice Mayor Carr on, on, on their recommendations, and- to Vice Mayor Carr on, on their recommendations. And I echo it. I have, I definitely have an issue with six, but I mentioned it and it's all, I'll make, mention again. Us relates to our demographics and what we're looking at. And that is a concerted effort. Maybe we even bring in some consultants to help us with that because a concerted effort to recruit and out, and have outreach to those on the, the lower middle income and lower income that, that is, that, that, that even though they're represented in the city, they're not represented as much in the, in our committees. And so these folks who may or may not show up at the Harvest Festival, who may or may not show up at some of these events, that some of our outreach strategies may not resonate with, with them. And if we don't know how to do it, then we do a better job doing it. And we, we get some advice, some insight from other folks who know better how to recruit and, and stimulate their interest in participating. Same thing goes for ethnic representation, specifically as I, as I mentioned, our Asian category, that, that we do a better job of reaching out. So that means we actually have an actual strategy for recruiting some of these folks and, and looking at that. Now, that is when it comes to our outreach strategy, like finding ways to have this, these targeted outreach strategies. Now, when it comes to our metrics and the things that we measure, we are measuring, once again, looking at renters versus homeowners amongst all our committees that we, and, and I support us looking at differently-able, but that, you know, that was already mentioned. But length of residency, looking at length of residency as a factor so that we can balance those who have been here for a while and those who are new. And both bring something to the table, but we need to look at what that means. And, and, and that is an issue because then a person who is a new homeowner is, is a bit different than a person who's owned a home in Emeryville for that long. And so they have a lot to say about our housing policies. And so I think that, that is, that is another recommendation that I am making. And then I am also making the recommendation as to how do we prevent uncontested appointments? And one of the things that can happen in terms of our communication strategy is let people know, like maybe within that 48-hour window before an application close, that one person, two people, three people applied, right? We, we don't mention who, who applied and, you know, but we at least give them a number. And so that people know, hey, you know, I remember that during the period, once again, shout out to Evil Eye, when they mentioned, there was an article that came out back when Member Carr, sorry, Vice Mayor Carr, Mayor Mora and I were running, there was a article that came out in Evil Eyes right before that said, hey, no one's really applying to, to run for city council. And then next thing you know, the people were informed and people were, and then people participated. I don't know if that is like informed you or, or you, but I, I know that people were suddenly informed and they got on board. And I still don't see what is our strategy when it comes to our local publications. I still don't see a strategy as to how do we change how we communicate to, to get broader reach outside of the, the recommendations, but thinking a little bit outside the box, us relates to partners and developing partners within a community to be able to recruit folks and let people know that these vacancies are available. And I think that, that would help prevent uncontested appointments. And I think that that is what I have an issue with because I don't know whether the uncontested appointment is, is a result of non-interest or that we weren't public enough in terms of how we inform folks about what's happening. So those are my recommendations.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you made a motion for approving one through recommendations. Is this, I did not know that there's, this item is for a motion or is this just for...
Just to clarify, this would be a motion to provide staff direction on how they should proceed.
So is this, can we just provide direction? Because obviously it seems to me that it's going to come back rather than having a motion because I, the reason why I'm saying that is because slides 20 and 21, the process slides are not incorporated in the staff recommendations. That's...
This is pertaining to recommendation number six. Is that right?
This is pertaining to recommendation number six, but as outlined in the table, is that...
Could we pull up, could we pull up the table just so we can see what might be unclear? Yes, go ahead. This is the table.
Okay, so that these proposed changes are only for if someone leaves in the middle of the term and then the, the, or is it also during the whole year? Because the way I'm reading that recommendation, if we can go back to that slide, is the last slide, open a continuous advisory body recruitment and make an annual, and make annual and unsched, or annual and unscheduled at the committee level. Okay, I see what, yeah. So I, if this direction, then I mean, that's, is there a motion that's needed for the direction or is this just a direction of what we have consensus?
The purpose of my motion was to show staff where they, how the council majority feels in terms of their recommendations.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Nay.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
I would like to make a substitute motion on, or do you already have a majority? So you don't need that.
Mr. Kennedy, could you weigh in on the procedure?
Thank you, Mayor Mora. So in order to, at this point during the roll, make a substitute motion, you would need to have a second to substitute the motion. If there is no second, then your substitute motion will die and we could proceed with voting on the original motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I would like to make a substitute motion agreeing on one through five. And then on item number six, the motion that I would make would be to refine, did you already, before, can I ask the question before I make the full motion? Did you already amend that about the Budget Advisory Committee?
Yes, it's not sunsetted. It would be delegated to the Budget and Governance.
Oh, I see. It would be part of the advisory body recruitment and make annual and, it would be the advisory body to make the annual and unscheduled appointments?
Yes, that seemed logical to me.
Yeah, so I, I would just make the substitute motion for one through five and not for six.
A second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the substitute motion.
So on the substitute motion, Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Nay.
Councilmember Welch.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Nay.
Motion fails. On the original motion, Councilmember Pryforce.
Nay.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Nay.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The time is 8:26 and this meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:26. This is the regular meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, I'd like to note that all members are still seated from the previous meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications on this agenda? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Bruce Boecker. I'm an architect, have been for over 40 years. In the course of my education, I've become a supervisor in nuclear containment, lead exposure and asbestos, as well as an ICBO and an ICC certified building inspector and building official. For nearly 10 years, I lived and worked at 6221 Hollis Street. In May and in June, we were forced to move out because Wareham tore down or demolished a building that was a little over 100 years old. As a result, the contamination of lead dust and asbestos were so great that in the laundry room, mailroom, and in the stairways, it exceeded 1,000% of safe levels. The letter I sent you guys wasn't an error, greater than 1,000%. Some areas were 1,600%. I've worked with this stuff. What is being done there right now, the cleanup, is not a cleanup. This is a disaster and it's happening before your eyes. I've had a lot of experience with this. This is something that should be done in containment, negative air suited up, serious contamination. Please, give this a very serious thought of what's going on. I don't think even as a, a former building official, I could red tag the place, but I could put some administrative forces together that would make sure that this place got cleaned up properly. And it is not. It is not. Please, please.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome.
Hi there. Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for your time, your service, and for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is James Elicker. My 10-year-old daughter Amelia and I have lived and worked in Emory for nearly a decade at 6221 Hollis, where I also run my small business, James Elicker Photography. I am here tonight to share urgent concerns about our health and safety. During the demolition of the building directly in front of our 35-foot north-facing window, Amelia and I have been exposed to dangerous levels of lead debris. Independent testing I commissioned shows extremely high low, high results. After months of unanswered emails, 83 days later, Wareham Development finally admitted that their own testing of our unit also exceeded recommended limits. Since July the 3rd, 2025, our home has been under lead abatement and uninhabitable. Amelia and I have been displaced for months without safe access to our home, our belongings, and even our clothing. This disruption has taken a toll on our health, our stability, and my livelihood. Yet, despite all this, Wareham Development is demanding over $6,400 in rent for the very period when our home was unsafe to occupy. This is unacceptable. No family should ever be forced to choose between their health and their housing. I urge the council to strengthen tenant protections during construction projects and to hold developers accountable for protecting residents. In closing, thank you again for the opportunity to share my family's experience. I am committed to working with the city and can provide documentation, including lead and blood test results, to help ensure that no other Emeryville families endure what we have faced. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Oh, please grab the mic. Thanks.
I'm at 6221 Hollis as well. I spoke last year about my first lead contamination from a roof being built last 20, 2024 July. Eight months later, the demolition of the building that is our building. It's not the building. It is our building. So if you look at this picture, this is the floor of my unit. And our building is one U-shaped building, which is included on our lease. Prior to the demolition, the building was parceled and it was called the adjacent building. So the adjacent building no longer had anything to do with us in our building. This U-shaped building, which is connect, which is connected by walls, that they're calling a separate building, is actually our building. And it's 29 feet away from 33-foot windows and dust and debris has come in there. The dust and debris was measured, myself personally, at least nine times. The results from Wareham were not shared from 2024. The results from Wareham this year were a partial. I need to know what the results are. I need to know what the effects are. And I am willing to share the results and blood tests as well. And I'm asking for oversight because what's going on over there is not what is being talked about. You have to come and see what's happening.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Public comment is now closed. We'll now move to the consent calendar. Members, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I will move to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
I wanted to poll to, well, not poll items, but I had a comment and question about two of the consent items, I believe 10.5 and 10.6.
We're on the previous meeting, the successor.
Oh, previous. Oh, this is the successor. Okay, got it. Okay, yeah, aye.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no action items. The time is 8:35. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:35. This is the regular meeting for the Emeryville City Council. I'd like to note all members are still seated from the previous meeting. We'll now take approval of the final agenda with one correction. This is to item 10.6, where the word retroactively as the grant period began July 1st. So this would be under the recommendation where it says, "Staff recommends the city council adopt the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to accept." It will now say retroactively accept, and this is because the grant period already commenced. So with that modification, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce. Councilmember Pfeiffer?
So we're approving the final agenda, but we're not approving the consent agenda items yet?
Correct, this is just the agenda, but we modified, we added the word retroactively to one item.
Yeah, aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no special orders of the day. Do we have any announcement of commission or committee vacancies?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We actually have a current recruitment open for unscheduled vacancies. The applications are due on September twenty-ninth, and the application is available on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Next, we have the, any city council member special announcements or reports on meeting attendance? Seeing none, we now have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report this evening, thank you.
Now is the time for ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none. Now is the time for public comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we now have the consent items. Member Pfeiffer, you indicated you wanted to pull an item, or you had a question about an item?
Yeah, I actually had a question about ten-point-six, but a comment for ten-point-five, which is the automated license plate reader, our budget, and our, you know, a grant associated with that. I just want to make the recommendation that we add more license plate readers. And so I'd like for that to be explored by our Public Safety Committee and our City Hall staff. And then for ten-point-six, I had a question around the programming that was proposed with the, with the list of programming that was proposed, like Coffee with a Cop and others, that there be some sort of programming as relates to young people, since this is a grant associated with the cannabis tax fund grant program that comes from CHP, that vaping is an issue, and that we take a public health approach that EPD can be involved in and maybe help run, that addresses vaping and have some sort of programming as relates to young people. And I believe that that was missing in that proposal, and so, yeah, so that is, yeah, so that's my recommendation. Yeah, I did have a question around that we had four active cannabis businesses, so I did have a question about that. I believe Chad may have an answer to that, or the city manager?
Does staff, is staff willing to clarify the comment about the number of active cannabis businesses?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we can clarify that for Councilmember Pfeiffer, I believe Captain Dower is here.
Oh, cool.
Welcome, Captain Dower, would you like to come to the podium?
The question was on the number of cannabis businesses in Emeryville?
Yeah.
First?
Yeah, the, yeah, the businesses, because I just want that clarification just in case anyone else looks at it and says, well, four active cannabis businesses in a city of twelve thousand, one mile by mile and a half, you know, that may be alarming, but apparently, like, active may not necessarily mean onsite use, or could you just clarify for that? Yeah.
So we have one, which is storefront sales, delivery, and onsite consumption. We have one that is distribution only. We have one that is a non-storefront retail dispensary and distribution, and then another one that is manufacturer, although it's not really manufacturing, it's just packaging, necessarily actually creating it, and then distribution and delivery. So those are the four, those are the four current permits that we have.
Okay, awesome, thank you, appreciate it, yeah.
I don't know if you want me to comment on the vaping and the targeting?
Yeah, if, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, and again, this is for the grant to, for reducing impaired driving and improving traffic, bicycle and pedestrian safety.
Yes, and absolutely, we can take the recommendations back. We use a lot of this funding in partnership with community services, a lot of the events that's, we use this funding to attend and staff some of the positions at those events. So I can take the recommendation back that we include, and part of this is outreach and education, so we can absolutely incorporate some of that into our events.
Thank you, Captain Dower. Member Pfeiffer, do you have an additional question?
Yeah, well, just a suggestion, I was actually sharing with the city manager. One of the best moments that came out of the, I believe, a documentary about Hurricane Katrina, A Hell of High Water, I believe it's called, was the army commander who was assigned to deal with the crisis that was Hurricane Katrina and post-Katrina aftermath, that the, that the, sort of the politicians, you know, the elected, wanted to treat it as a security matter. And so thus, you know, there were some folks who had their guns out, and he told them to put the guns down. And although he didn't use that language, for those of us in the philanthropic space, I recognized it as he treated it as a public health matter. And that's one of the reasons why, when, if anyone were to question your interaction with youth and why that's important, is because even though you, you know, you represent the law enforcement community, our community, law enforcement can still treat things as a public health matter, even though they typically treat things as a security matter, and so thus, your involvement and input in that would help a lot, and I think the young people, our young people would appreciate that approach, and so, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Captain. So just returning to the consent items, do we have a motion for approval on the consent items?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no public hearings. The next item is an action item. This is twelve-point-one for the resolution of the city council authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services contract with Community Counseling Service.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and city councilmembers. Chadrick Smalley, Community Development Director. Here to give a little update and ask for an action in connection with the Art Center project. So we can go to the next slide, please. So by way of background, we are talking about the approximately thirty thousand square foot building directly behind City Hall, shown in yellow on this slide. Next slide, please. And briefly, to go through a long period of time, as quickly as possible, this property was bought in two thousand and six for the purposes of being an art center. Through two thousand and six through twenty-twenty, there were various attempts and plans at this project, culminating in a deal, a lease disposition and development agreement, or LDDA, with a developer. That agreement was terminated in October of twenty-twenty-two. And in July of twenty-three, we held a study session with city council to talk about how to restart the project. At that study session, we talked about overall project objectives and the elements in the project and the implementation process that we were proposing. The council gave direction on that, which I'll get to on the next slide, and we also had a recommendation to create a task force to help advise the council and staff on the project. Came back in February of twenty-four with an update and a contract with Artist Love and Gene Johnstone Consulting, who are here today, and in case there are questions on their work, and I'm going to go into that in a moment. And then the last time we met was November nineteenth of last year. We held a study session where we looked at a feasibility study that looked at what it would take adaptive reuse of the existing building versus new construction, and we received some direction from the council on the next slide, which I'll go over at that point. Thank you. So to recap, the direction has been received over these various meetings, all on one slide, maintaining the project objectives that were established a long time ago, many years ago, and those key elements. But the council at that time directed us to solicit more input from the community. Those key elements are the same as established back in twenty-seventeen. This one's underlined, we asked, we laid out some options for proceeding in the hybrid implementation approach was what was endorsed by the city council with some modification. The council said, you know, the proposal by staff was build what you can build and find an operator later. And the council said, yes, that's fine, but don't just build a building. Build a building that's responsive to the community and fulfills, you know, the objectives of the project and is done through outreach. Next slide, please. The task force was recommended by the city council to inform the staff, as I mentioned, and to implement the project. And now late, now we're shifting into the next study session. When we came back with the feasibility study that showed the costs were roughly comparable between adaptive reuse and new construction, the pros and cons of each approach, the city council said it was also very expensive. The city council said, well, go forward and try to implement this comprehensively. Do not parse out or phase the project, but bring it all at once, if possible. Also, make it new construction, because you have more flexibility in what you can build, and it's roughly the same cost, but try to retain some element of the architectural, you know, heritage of that building. And the council also asked us to retain a capital fundraising consultant for a funding strategy in light of how high these costs were, because we have a large gap between what's been, what we have in the CIP, its identified funding, and what these projected costs were to be for the comprehensive project. And so those two outlines, those two things I underlined are the things we're really talking about today in this update and request for action. So as I mentioned, Sharman and Gene from Artist Love and Gene Johnstone have a scope contract, they're working their way through it. The things that are underlined here have been completed. They've reviewed all the background documents, been conducting outreach, which is still ongoing, actually, it's not complete. They've engaged with the Art Center Advisory Group that we impaneled to advise us on this, completed the adaptive, the reuse of the building analysis to see if it made sense, turned out it didn't. And now they have completed an analysis of operation and funding models, and I'll get to their conclusions in a moment. The next step that they will take is to develop a framework for that recommended operating entity structure that has to be done more or less simultaneously with this capital fundraising work that we're about to undertake. Next slide, please. So here's the update. The operational model analysis was completed, and it, perhaps unsurprisingly, arrives at the same conclusion and is consistent with the direction provided by the city council in previous study sessions to find a nonprofit operator to operate this center once constructed. But we have more specificity around what that could look like, or what the recommended pathway could look like, based on Artist Love, Gene Johnstone's work in looking at similar types of facilities, the market of this area, how they're funded. And some of those recommendations or more specificity are outlined on this slide. One is that it have a strong performing arts focus, because twenty-seven percent of the grant funding that is going into the arts is targeting performing arts, so it makes sense to position that way. Strong educational components need to be a part of the operating model, because it's sixty percent of earned revenue on average for these kinds of organizations. And in order for those two things to work, we need to have spaces for year-round engagement, things like gift shop and, you know, public-facing things, that in the project in order to increase that earned revenue and the community support for the organization. So as I mentioned, this is consistent with, but more specific than the prior direction the city council gave to us. And so it gives us a good map on moving forward as we look to solve the next question, which is, how much money is there? The next step will be for them to talk about, well, how do we find or create that organization, and what does it look like exactly? And they'll be working simultaneously with the fundraising consultant. On the next slide, I go into that. So as I mentioned, the recommendation of the Art Center Advisory Council was to engage a fundraising consultant to come up with a strategy. We went through quite a process to procure these services. It's a little unorthodox, I think, for, not super unorthodox, but it's not a super common thing for a city to hire a capital fundraising consultant. So there was a little bit of a learning curve here. We put an RFQ together. We wanted a partner more than a proposal. And so it makes sense to do a request for qualifications for that kind of thing, rather than ask for something very specific in a request for proposals. We put that RFQ outline together and presented it to the Art Center Advisory Group, got their endorsement of that. We put the RFQ out between February fifth and February twenty-first, and that was a pretty quick turnaround time, and we knew it at the time. But we were, you know, hopeful that we would get a good array of proposals in response to that, and it turned out we didn't. It was just too short. We only got one response. The Art Center Advisory Group agreed with staff's recommendation to slow down a little bit, put it out again, so that we actually have, we want to get this right. And it'd be nice to compare qualifications against each other. So we put it out again, the same RFQ, with the Q and A that had been generated from the last RFQ from March twenty-eighth to May ninth, quite a bit more time to respond. And we did more outreach to the various consulting firms that we were able to identify in this space and sent it to them directly and did more work in that outreach component as well. This worked much better, and we got five responses. So now we have a good array of firms to compare and to choose from. We evaluated those, Gene, myself, and Sharman evaluated those, and we narrowed it down to a shortlist of two, brought those and the proposals back to the Art Center Advisory Group, and they agreed with our recommendation to interview those two, top two firms, and see what they're about and select on that basis. We conducted those interviews on June tenth, and on June seventeenth, the advisory group, consistent with staff's recommendation, recommended award of the contract to CCS. Next slide, please. So who is CCS? They were founded in nineteen forty-seven, and they've done over three hundred of these types of studies just in the past year. So an extensive amount of experience with this firm. Over a hundred arts and cultural organizations they've partnered with for various, you know, campaigns and strategies, feasibility studies over that time. What they will be doing is they're going to first learn everything they can about our community, about the project, and really immerse themselves in what we're trying to accomplish here. They'll then, they'll be able to look at the landscape of philanthropy in this area for this kind of thing. They'll help us develop a case for support. We'll do this through doing interviews and surveys of the community and of key stakeholders. And the deliverables that this will generate will be a work plan, the surveys themselves, the test case, and then reports with recommendations on how to proceed. The total contract amount is ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars for this work, to take place over about the next four months or so, is what they're indicating this will take to do. Next slide. So our recommendation is to adopt the resolution that authorizes this contract with CCS, as I mentioned, four months. We'll be checking in with the Art Center Advisory Group, obviously, periodically during this time, and then we'd come back to you after their work is completed to tell you the findings. Happy to answer any questions you may have for me. We also have Travis Carley from CCS here, if you have questions for him, and we also have Gene and Sharman from our consultant team here, if you have questions for them specifically. So happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. Member Pfeiffer?
Thanks, Chad, and welcome. All right. So, actually, yeah, 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 if you mind, yeah, yeah, yeah. So what was your first reaction, response, when you heard, when this project came before you? I guess in the, in this process? Did you immediately identify other projects similar to this?
Yeah, there are a number of projects we've worked with that have some similarities, especially with a project of this nature. There's no easy, single, I think, parallel that checks all the boxes. We've worked many times with creating arts organizations, on public-private partnerships, and working with organizations, and projects sponsored in partnership with cities. and working with organizations and projects sponsored in partnership with cities. A couple of them, one very, two we're very proud of, I'll mention just across the bridge, Tunnel Tops being a public space that we helped devise the strategy for, as well as a current project to make a new park in India Basin possible that's underway. So, you know, a number of the factors that come immediately to mind are the nature of public-private partnership, the importance of identifying funds within and in support of this community specifically, as well as very interested to get into and hear more about the project, its benefits, and through the operating model, where does that philanthropy flow? How is that managed? And how do the multiple stakeholders trying to make this project possible cooperate together for an effective potential fundraising campaign?
Member Pryforce.
So, so philanthropy is my background, but I had to, I actually had to like learn a little bit about philanthropy in terms of the art world, especially when it comes to public and private partnerships. And, and one of the interesting models that were coming up was that museums actually have some staying power as it relates to their ability to come across crisis and their ability to fundraise, that there's something about the preservation of something that pulls in money across sectors, especially art, especially when neighborhoods change, you know, so museums have a way of being able to sort of sustain themselves. But one of the things that came across, that I came across when I was asking people about it, whatever, and they asked me about sometimes government or especially small government cities being considered like a volatile partner. And so, and that sometimes makes people feel a bit unease about sort of continuously donating, especially if they're recurrent donors, long-term donors. How have you seen this marriage between not just public-private partnership, but specifically when the city is a bit more involved or when a municipal, you know, when there's a municipal hand in the project?
There are a number of different ways to address something that complicated, depending on who's involved, whether there's an existing municipal infrastructure that relates directly to the project. And I think a lot of it in this case is going to come down to the intersection of the operating partnership. And who and what that entity is in relationship to the programming, the facility, the community benefit and that ongoing relationship with the city. Is it a municipal project? Is it a municipally-owned building leasing to a nonprofit partner? There are so many factors at play there. So those are some of the considerations that'll, that need to be taken into account. And we hope to hear from those that want to invest civically in the arts community that want to see a facility like this possible and thriving and strong and what their concerns are, speaking strictly from a fundraising efficacy standpoint.
Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll now open for a public comment. Do we have any members of the public who wish to comment on this? Seeing no members of the public, I'll bring this back for council discussion or a motion. Member Pryforce.
So one of the things that I think is really important for this project, and, and one thing I would encourage you, is to make recommendations, you know, Chad's awesome. And the folks you are working with in terms of our artist community are very, are just, just dope. And so make recommendations if you need to, on our end, when it comes to protection, when it comes to protecting this. Because last thing we want is like a whole new city council, which is probably what, what they were, they're talking about, you know, in terms of the volatility, whole new city council, who would I say don't like art? I don't know how that's going to happen in Emeryville, but you know, let's say, say we have the, you know, or they prioritize corporate interests or whatever, and they just derail the project. And so, and how, how do we protect it in the future? Like what recommendations we need to make? And so then there is a sort of a managing up that I, I definitely encourage you to do. Yeah, well, yeah, managing up. And that may also happen to do with the relationship between this project and its own sort of governing board. Have you guys, I have a question, a question, yeah, have you guys thought about that? Like how does the, the board exist? Is it going to be a trustees? Is it going to be like, yeah, how to tell?
Hi, Gene Johnstone. Yeah, great questions. And a lot of that is what we'll be looking to solve in the next report to you all, actually. That work really begins now. We've, you know, begun some of the research on the, the possible models where it's working. Obviously, the, you know, the, the, things are changing quickly in the realm of nonprofit organizations and philanthropy these days. So we're, you know, trying to stay abreast of that, but that will be the subject of the next period of research.
Yeah, we were just talking about that we're fortunate to be able to actually be within the hundred-year storm. So we're, we're kind of like, you know, it's a, you know, challenging time, but I think it also lends itself to an opportunity to, to really actually see the what-ifs. And so I think this is probably why, or this is why Chad mentioned that this work is going to be happening in tandem with the work that CCS is doing. To Travis's point, it's, you know, it's a little bit more nuanced to come up with the fundraising strategy without actually knowing what the thing, the programming is. And so some of this work will be happening at the same time, but our, our goal is to kind of stay ahead a little bit. And so that's, that's what we're.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments or emotion? Member Solomon?
I was just going to move approval.
We have a motion for approval of the resolution. Do we have a second?
I can second it.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have item 12.2, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, establishing the fiscal year 2026 property tax levy rate for the city's general obligation bond indebtedness.
Good evening again, Mayor, council members. The purpose of tonight's agenda item is to consider adopting the property tax levy for fiscal year 2026 related to the city's affordable housing bond. Next slide, please. Again, the affordable housing bond relates to Measure C, which was approved by the Emeryville voters in 2018. The purpose of Measure C was to issue $50 million in bonds that would be repaid over 27 years annually with the purpose to provide affordable housing and prevent displacement of vulnerable populations. Next slide, please. This slide just highlights a few of the key dates and deliverables leading up to the levy, including council adoption of the Affordable Housing Bond Administration and Expenditure Plan in 2021, the authorization and the subsequent sale of $50 million in general obligation bonds in 2023. As a result of the issuance of the bonds, council did approve the corresponding property tax levy in September '23 and '24 respectively to cover the debt service. And tonight is the third tax levy under consideration. Next slide, please. Council annually receives a report on the use of the Measure C bonds. However, I thought it would be useful to just provide some context and highlight some of the use of the Measure C bonds to date. As the slide illustrates, 3.5 million allocated to the Gateway Project for about 89 residential units, money allocated to retain below-market-rate ownership units, significant allocation, almost 24 million to the Christie sites for 362 residential units. Next slide, please. And nearly $2 million to the first home, Emeryville, to provide homeowner down payment assistance, which was also a specific item that was included in the ballot measure related to the ability to help purchase homes. As of September 2024, 207 applications have been received, two loans have closed, and there are four conditional pending offers for approval. So kudos to my colleagues in our, our planning department for their good work. Next slide, please. Regarding the tax, tax levy methodology, again, based on the debt schedule, we look at the annual amount of debt that needs to be covered. We compare that to the estimated revenue to come through assessed property tax. When we look at property tax, we look at the secured property tax, that's real property, land, buildings. We also assess unsecured taxes, which is real property that's not secured by land. These are things such as aircraft, boats, machinery, office furniture. Next slide, please. As you can see on the chart at the bottom of the slide or the table, for fiscal year '26, the secured tax rate is proposed to be $47.30 per 100,000 of assessed value. The unsecured tax rate is $43.66. Based on the methodology from the auditor, controller in Almena County, the unsecured tax rate is actually the secured tax rate from the prior fiscal year. So you can see on the chart that the fiscal year '25 secured tax rate was $43.66. That's now the proposed unsecured tax rate for fiscal year '26. Again, in totality, the secured and unsecured tax rate will cover the debt service of approximately 3.55 million. It's also important to note is that the secured tax rate and the unsecured tax rate is less than the estimated tax rate of $49.12. Again, in 2018, when the voters approved Measure C, it was estimated that the tax rate average would be $49.12. So again, the '26 tax rule will be under that. Next slide, please. With that, staff does recommend that council adopt the resolution approving the '26 property tax levy for the general obligation bonds. This will help ensure that we meet our debt service obligations as well as continue funding for the affordable housing programs. With that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sharon. Members, do we have any questions? Seeing none, we'll now open for public comment. Seeing no members of the public, we'll bring this back for council discussion or a motion.
I can move to approve.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have department head reports.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my report on planning commission actions taken at their August 28th meeting. All seven members of the commission were present for this meeting and the commission established its officers for the year with Jordan Wax continuing as chair and Rod Henme continuing as vice chair. The commission unanimously approved a one-year extension for the Bay Center Life Science Project that consists of a new six-story building with 210,000 square feet of research and development space and a new parking structure at 6425 through 6455 Christie Avenue. The commission unanimously approved a permit for science for the Tokyo Central Grocery Store at 5603 Bay Street. And lastly, the commission unanimously recommended that the city council adopt the updated local hazard mitigation plan. That's scheduled for your review at your next meeting, September 16th. This concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. Next, we have future agenda item requests. Members, are there any future agenda items? Member Pryforce.
So I'd like to request that we add a presentation on the city's new website to a future agenda. To my knowledge, neither my colleagues nor I were given an opportunity to review the website before it was launched. Since then, I've received numerous messages from residents expressing disappointment with it, and I took time to explore it myself. When I recognized, while I recognized that a feedback form has been integrated on the front page and that mapping across search engines like Google is still in progress, I believe the council and the public would benefit from a deeper understanding of the process and intent behind this redesign. Specifically, I'd like the presentation to address the following. What problems or shortcomings of the previous website does this new site solve? I believe that that was like an internal memo for us, but I'd like it to be addressed a bit more publicly. How does the new site compare side by side with websites from other cities, similar to the comparative analysis that we undertake for other policy decisions? Well, mostly all policy decisions. What were the goals, benchmarks, and measures of success established for this redesign? And how will we evaluate whether they are being met? So for example, I've been pushing this body towards a communication strategy. Does this website fit into that? Which is, we talked a lot about recruiting and how does the website fit that? And so it'd be great to get some feedback around that. But this will give both council and the community clarity on the rationale behind the project, ensure that the website fulfills its role as a public service tool. So that's my recommendation, that'd be added to the future agenda item, a presentation about the website.
With a show of hands, is there support for a presentation on the website and all the decision-making leading up to it in addition to the already mentioned feedback tool that's been implemented on the website? I see one in favor, the motion fails. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce.
Since no one has a future agenda item to propose, then I'll make a future agenda item for us to visit a discussion around the Pledge of Allegiance returning to council chambers, and I will demonstrate.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With a show of hands, is there support for adding the addition of the Pledge of Allegiance to a future agenda? Seeing only one, the motion fails. Any other future agenda items? This meeting, the time is 9:14, this meeting is adjourned.